All right, welcome to the March 18th, 2020 regular meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, once again, thanks you all for joining us, everyone who's here and those who are watching at home. We'll begin with the roll call. Mary?
Louis?
Here.
Palmer?
Zimmet?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
All right, our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. It's fun to be back to having Highlander highlights, and this week we finally get to do one in person. So, we are, the board will honor Matt Townsend for being named the Coach of the Year for the Minnesota Football Coaches Association in the Twin Cities Red, and I would like to welcome Principal Nguyen and Jake Henderson, our Activities Director. Come on up, yes, there he is, sir.
I can start off, Mr. Nguyen, if you'd like to.
Go ahead, Mr. Henderson.
All right, Superintendent Stenbik, thanks for having us. Matt, just want to offer congratulations to you for Coach of the Year. It's well deserved. Your passion for our students and our community, as well as the Highlander football team has always been evident. You've been at this a long time, and you've made a super positive impact on our community. Me personally, I've really appreciated the many conversations that we've had and the visions we have for the Activities Department in the future. I think you're a great leader. I've been in your classroom when you've been teaching, I think Todd's maybe going to mention some of that. I told you I wouldn't steal it, and you're a great coaching coach, so thanks for all you've done, and again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening Chair Severson, members of the Board and Superintendent Stenbik, and thank you for allowing me to speak on, in support of Mr. Townsend, and Jake, thanks for not taking everything I was going to say. I do want to make sure that we recognize that Mr. Townsend, graduate of Columbia Heights in 1992, has dedicated at least a quarter of a century, it just sounded like you've been there for a lot longer than, say, in 25 years, to teaching and coaching in Columbia Heights, and Matt, thank you for your service there. You are definitely a proud product of our school system. You take great pride in Columbia Heights. I've had an opportunity to see you in the classroom and on the field, and what I can say about you, Matt, is that in both arenas, you're a teacher. You teach kids, that's what you do, and as a coach, I think those are your best coaches, people that are teaching kids Xs and Os, but more importantly, lifelong lessons. And I've had an opportunity to sit into some of your coaches' talks with the kids, and you've got their attention, and I describe you, Matt, as a player's coach. You build great relationships with your team, as well as you have a very loyal and dedicated coaching staff that surrounds you. I love your humility. You take no accolades, and you take all responsibility, and that's what great coaches do. You have very high expectations for your team, you have high expectations for your coaching staff, and more importantly to me, you have high expectations for yourself. You carry yourself with class intact at all times. I was a coach, and I know the sacrifice and the time commitment it takes to be successful as a coach and to have a successful team, and so I also want to thank your wife and your two children, as they are without their dad many a days and nights, as you're dedicated as a teacher and a coach. So, I know that that's your support, and it's been a privilege for me to get to know them as well, just a little bit of the time I've had. So, congratulations, Coach Townsend, this is your second time you've won this prestigious award, and Highlander Nation is very proud of you, so congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Worth of a round of applause, for sure. So, Coach Townsend was named the Coach of the Year for the Twin Cities District Football Red Subdivision by the Minnesota Football Coaches Association, and the football team finished 3-5 in the regular season and 7-4 overall. So, in 2021, the football team was the Red Subdistrict Champions and finished 2nd place in Section 44A, which was exciting. I went to most of the games myself, and really exciting. So, just want to personally, and then I'll open it up to everyone else who has comments, say thank you. You've coached one of my sons, you coached one of my sons in football through his whole football career, and even tonight before the meeting, asked me how he was doing. So, that's fun to see how much you still care about the kids, even after they've graduated, and it's exciting to know that that same son of mine wants to become a coach and a teacher. So, you did something right. Excited for that and thankful for your influence in his life and in the lives of many kids across that, times many my kids, so, others? I figured you'd have something to say.
I mean, it does kind of go back to maybe 1992-ish, maybe even before that, when you started with my brother. So, I've watched Mr. Townsend over the years, but really, truly, as a teacher and a coach, you do so much more than just coach, you mentor, and I think it speaks volumes, when you see the coaching staff that's been beside you, they wouldn't be there continually if you weren't a good leader as well. And then just talking about the season, you know, you had, the season before was pretty rough, same group of kids, and you developed those kids, you know, and their confidence skyrocketed. So, what you do, you know, the weight room, teaching, everything, it is so much appreciated in this district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, so we do have this, did you? Oh, yeah, we should give you an opportunity, you're a man of many words, so, if you know that, it's kind of funny. To the guys, I think you have a lot to say on the football team, to the students on the team, but probably in public, but do you have anything you want to share with us?
I'd just like to say thank you. I, like, you know, our kids were great this year. We had, you know, a nice, nice season. Obviously, we always want to kind of get to that next step, but our kids played very hard, they, you know, they were challenged with that COVID season where, you know, we were never even in the building, we were underneath the band room, and then it snowed, so then we had to be in six inches of snow. So, it was a challenging year, but it was great that those seniors got a chance to play, and then, you know, a lot of those kids returned, and we had a great year this year. So, it was fun, it was fun, I think we had a great crowd at the friendly game in our section final, we had a lot of support this year during our home games and stuff, so it was, it was a lot of fun, and our kids were great, and they worked hard and did a lot, you know, did everything that we asked of them, and, you know, and they were just a step short, but they should be very proud of their season. My coaching staff is great, they work extremely hard, we put a lot of time and effort and energy into it, and, you know, so I appreciate them, and they've been with, you know, some of them have been with our, with the district longer than I've been here, so they've put a lot of time and effort to it, so truly appreciative of them. And then again, thank you to Todd and Jake for their support with the administration, you know, Todd was on our sideline and supporting us, and Jake's always supporting and making sure that, you know, what we need as a program, they're helping us out, so truly appreciative of our administration and our school community, so thank you.
Yeah, well, we have a certificate we'd like to present to you, so if you wouldn't mind coming up here. And Board, we're going to go back to our old ways of congratulating people with the handshake, so because of our new arrangement, if you would maybe go here, and we'll usher Mr. Townsend out this way, so Lorian, if you want to start the trend, but I think somebody wants a picture, there's always a picture.
It's weird.
We can elbow bump this time?
Four, normally it's three.
Congratulations, we're so excited.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for joining us tonight, Mr. Townsend, if you want to depart, there's no pressure to stay, we won't, like, mark you as tardy, or, no, it's not would be tardy, it's truant or whatever, so feel free to take off, get to be with that family.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, we will move on to the Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements and Correspondence, and we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Molly, second?
Second.
Lorian, any discussion on the agenda? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, agenda approved. We'll move on to announcements. March 15th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, there's a School Board Work Session in the Community Room. March 21st through the 25th, there's no school for spring break. April 7th through 8th, there, Thursday and Friday, there's no school. April 12th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. April 15th, which is a Friday, there's also no school. And April 19th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular School Board Meeting in the Community Room. We'll move on to Correspondence, do we have any Correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no Correspondence at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then to Communication to the Board. At this point, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the Administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and since we do have people our share, I'm going to read through the back, so people at home can hear. It says, "Welcome to the Columbia Heights Public School Board Meeting. In the interest of open communication, the Columbia Heights District wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to address the School Board. That opportunity is provided at every regular School Board Meeting during communications to the Board. Anyone indicating, anyone indicating a desire to speak about the matter in the Board's agenda during the communications to the Board will be acknowledged by the Board Chair. When called upon to speak, please move up to the presenter's table with a microphone. All remarks shall be addressed to the Board as a whole, not to any specific member or members, and to any person who is not a Board Member. If there are a number of individuals present to speak on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson who can summarize the issue, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Longer time may be granted at the discretion of the Board Chair. If you have written comments, the Board would like a copy, which will help them better understand, investigate, and respond to your concerns." And once again, we've talked about data privacy, so being careful not to use the name of any students or employees of the district, or anything that would identify any students or employees of the district. And I only have the one card, is that correct? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, which contains the Personal Report, School Board Minutes, and Financial, Treasury Reports from way back, quite a bit of them, as I was looking earlier. So, can we get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? So moved. Laura?
Second.
Molly? Discussion on the Consent Agenda. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries, great. Move on to Discussion, Discussion Reports and Information Items, and we'll start with Reports from Members of the Board. I don't know about you all, but I was having a hard time remembering when I was looking at this earlier today, so I'm hopeful that Lorian will know all of the things, so that we can all quick type them in there.
Well, I trust all of you will fill in the blanks when I leave, so, since our last meeting, I had a meeting with Member Louis, so thank you very much, that was a very informative and enjoyable time. I also attended the high school band concert, which always just a great time, seeing the kids, you know, how, I'm the art in the heart, so that was, they just did a great job, it was fun to see them on stage performing, so kudos to them. I also had a conversation with the Executive Director of the Metro Exu, which I am the representative for. I had some concerns about the Executive Board election process, so he and I had a conversation to discuss that. I also attended the Columbia Heights Business Council Meeting, and we had some great presentations talking about workforce and the labor market, and I attended the Chair Meeting prior to this.
All right, great, thank you. Mary?
All right, so, I was able to participate actually in stories from our neighbors in the conversation about mental health, which was really great, talking about mental health in our community and what that looks like, and I had a number of students come up and talk afterwards and share some other stories, which was great. I attended part of the boys' basketball game for Highlander Family Day. I spoke with Superintendent Stenbik and Director Zimmet, and then I had meetings with both Representative Feist and Representative Kegel about our school district, and then prior to this meeting, I attended the Policy Subcommittee.
Come on.
I got you.
All right, Brenna?
I was able to participate in the Highlander Basketball Day with my kids, which was awesome, the North Park Family Sledding Event, which was very well attended and very, very fun. I was able to connect with several staff members at the North Park Conferences, the parent-teacher conferences, and then I had communication with staff and parents about the Equity Statement that we put out, and then communication with Member Palmer and Granland and Superintendent Stenbik.
All right, thank you. Laura?
Yes, thank you Brenna, that was a great conversation, and I really do appreciate your time. Let me see, I attended the Policy Committee prior to this, I usually forget that when I go from, you know, back to forward. I also attended the 916 Monthly Meeting, and I do want to speak briefly on that, I've talked about the Special Education Opportunities, but we did have a presentation on Career in Tech, because originally 916 was actually formed to be a vocational district, where Special Ed was added, I believe it was in the 80s, or maybe it might have been the 70s. So, Special Ed is an AND, that's become, I guess you could say, probably our greatest collaboration, but originally started out as Career in Tech. There are a lot of certifications that are available to our students, and I know that some of the districts right now are trying to do some collaboration to be able to give more access to the students that are further away from Century College, because we're a pretty good clip as far as transportation issues are concerned, you know, so I know we have four students that are currently going out to Century College to be able to take those, to be able to take advantage of those opportunities. Okay, in addition to that, I also attended the 916 Strategic Planning Session, that's where I actually learned a little bit of the history of 916 and the different changeovers that have happened, and the different responsibilities, and different programming that eventually became part of the district, and the foundation helps to support those students, both with scholarships like a Career in Tech, as well as, as being able to support additional, additional needs for the programmings and stuff, so, anyway, I also participated in that process. And I'll be done. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Molly?
Thank you, I'll be a lot shorter and less exciting, except, I'm sorry, Member Mueller, our meeting was lovely, thank you. And then I also attended some basketball games, surprise, surprise, varsity girls and boys. Congrats to the girls on a really well-fought season, it was rough, a lot of challenges, but they, they all finished strong. And the boys play tomorrow night, sorry, that's not part of this, but just saying, fill the gym.
Bring it back up, it's more topics.
And also had a lot of conversations with community members about our Equity Statement and also about masking, that's it.
Yeah, as for me, I had the Policy Meeting and the Chair Meeting, both prior to this meeting. I had, I have continual brief meetings with Director, or Superintendent Stenbik over the course of every week, I think, which is a good thing, and had a very brief exchange with Brenna, and then, like all of you, or probably most of you, had communications about our Equity Statement with different stakeholders in the district, which is exciting, hearing really positive reception to that, and I was able to attend the Boys Swim Sections and the Boys Swim State Tournament, so.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. I've been meeting, regular meetings with all of the Directors and all of the Principals, planning for the end of this school year and planning for the next school year as well, so that's always exciting. Of course, we continue to monitor COVID-19, and we'll be discussing that a little bit later in this meeting. I've been asked to present at the Minnesota Association for School Administrators Conference, which will be this Thursday morning, around my involvement on the Committee to Create the First Ever State Principal Survey, so that information will happen on Thursday. And since the last Board Meeting, I had communication with many Board Members, and thank you all for your time. Lastly, I would like to recognize that today is International Women's Day, and I find myself right now in the presence of Board Members, who are strong, capable, caring, intelligent women, so thank you all for your service and for your time.
Thank you.
Go you.
All right, wow, it's a good day. All the other women in the house as well? Thank you. We'll move on to our COVID Update, and that will be a presentation from Superintendent Stenbik and Lindsay Bennett, our Director of Human Resources, and John Frye, our Director of Special Education.
Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik, tonight we're here to present an update on COVID-19. So again, our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And the core values for today's presentation will focus on collaboration and courage. So, I'll start by giving a staff update on COVID. We did have a dramatic increase in case rates following winter break, one of the biggest spikes I have seen since COVID started about two years ago. Case rates are much lower now. We did have a switch to distance learning at the secondary level, and so we did have to utilize secondary staff to go to the elementary schools to assist, we had a spreadsheet, clerical, EAs, Principals, Rover Helping Elementary, just to get through after winter break. In addition, District Center staff has gone over and helped in classrooms, serving lunch, and other building duties as much as we can to help out. And for vaccine numbers, approximately, so we did a survey a couple months ago, when we thought we'd have to do a policy and have everybody prove their vaccination status or show that, we had 300 in staff report that they are vaccinated, we have 18 staff that report as not vaccinated, and we have 165 that either didn't complete the survey, so we are unknown of whether or not they're vaccinated. I'll pass it on to Director Frye to give a, let's do an update.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. Again, you've seen the first bullet point, but we're up to about 1,250 students who've participated in vaccine clinics that we've offered, whether it's at the elementary level or even just district-wide. The hope is when we do, the bottom, the bottom point there talks about anticipating federal approval for students who are ages four and under, and we're hoping to host a clinic with another partner, to see how that goes, to increase our numbers, and to, I guess, increase the spread, so to speak, not of COVID, but of safety. And the second thing there is just our, just the actual number of cases in our ZIP Code, 55421, the last two weeks, up until March 3rd, from February 2017 to March 3rd, we had 17, or 61. The month before, we had, in that two-week span, we had 488. So clearly, you can see a marked difference in that two-week total, which is allowing us to kind of hopefully breathe a little better, but I'm going to pass it on to Superintendent Stenbik.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So, as mentioned, you know, there's a lot of time and effort, of course, spent on all things COVID-19, and our, the health and safety of our student-staff and our community is really maintain, you know, continue to be the top priority for us. I wanted to have a conversation with the Board in, you know, in this public meeting, because there's a lot of questions around masking and our mask requirement, and I think it's important that we have this conversation here. The decision, just so people know, based on the Board Policy and our process this school year, does lie with me as the Superintendent, and so some of the things we're looking at, as mentioned, we could not run school as normal, you know, in-person school after winter break. There were some cases where we had 25% of people in a building out due to COVID, the cases skyrocketed. So, as you know, we shifted to distance learning at the secondary level, and those staff members that were not teaching were helping to keep the doors open at our elementary and our early childhood levels. So, really looking ahead, thankfully, we're very thankful that the case rates are low, we're not required at this time to track specific COVID vaccination status, we know that we have a pretty high number in the community and among our students and staff that are currently vaccinated, and we continue to offer that, that service as well, and along with the weekly, bi-weekly testing?
Yes, bi-weekly testing for staff.
Bi-weekly testing, thank you, and testing as needed. So, some of the things that we're looking at as we, as we look ahead, right, so that was our difficult look back after spring break and what, what the district went through, and looking, as we look ahead, we have another break coming up. So, I just want people to know that that is a concern, that's, that's just based on everything that we, that we had such interrupted schooling in, in the month of January and into February, because of, you know, all of the gathering that happened at that break. So, we are looking and, and at all of the factors when it comes to relaxing our mask requirement. As we do that, we are looking at the time that it will take for, for that transition period, meaning educating students, educating staff, and what it means, because as we, when we do get to the point where we relax the masks, many people will opt to continue to wear a mask, and we want to make sure we're educating our students and staff and community that that's perfectly fine, that's someone's choice, and masks have been a part of our lives for two years. And so, we have, we'll take a little bit of time to do that and really set that expectation for our students and our staff. But with that, a decision will be made, and parents will be, will be informed this week. So, by the end of this week, I know there's a lot of questions people really want to know, so they will know in a couple of days, within a couple of days, they'll know. Where, where, you know, we are for sure heading in that direction, the specific date will be announced. I just want to also reiterate that we do have, currently have children ages four and under who don't have the opportunity for a vaccine, and they, I'm not looking at relaxing masks for, for that age group, including the staff that serve them, until that, those children have that opportunity. So, but for the other age groups, that's what we're looking, we're looking, we're moving in that direction.
All right, so questions from members of the Board?
I have a couple of questions. So, as I understand it, what you're saying is, we are looking at the lowercase rates that we have right now, we are looking at relaxing our mask mandate?
Yes.
That specific date when we're going to, say, masks are now optional?
Mm-hmm.
Has not yet been determined, right?
This week, the parents will be informed.
So, you're going to determine that this week?
Yes.
And, and provide that, and all of the factors that you're looking into related to spring break, and, you know, potentials for exposures, and current case rates, and all of that go into, into that decision?
Yes, that's a great summary.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
And then, just as, and again, this is kind of where you, we blend the, the governance and management piece, but I, I think it would be helpful as we maneuver through this, again, as Chair Severson once said, we look for days when they're precedented again, right?
Precedented.
We continue to have unprecedented times, yet another part of our world that is, we've never been through before, is, is providing communication to parents and families on, on the exposure and, and the what-to-dos, right? So, because there's certain things that the CDC has, you know, has come out, and there's changes in that guidance and policy as well, but if your child has been exposed, here are the three steps you need to take. If there's an exposure at school, here's what's going to happen. You know, if your child needs to be tested, is it a PCR test or is it an antigen test? And, like, I think that those communications are important as we maneuver through this, these next steps.
I just had two quick things. One is, for accurate...
If there's an exposure at school, here's what's going to happen. You know, if your child needs to be tested, is it a PCR test or is it an antigen test? And like, I think that those communications are important as we maneuver through this, these next steps.
I just had two quick things. One is for activities and such in the evening, is that going to be relaxed at the same time that you're talking about this school day? Just to clarify, right?
That's right.
So as of right now?
It'd be within the buildings.
Perfect. And then, when is the federal mandate for the busing? When does that expire?
So originally, that was March 18. And with current, with the new CDC guidance, they're relaxing that all, they're relaxing that as well.
And so how are we handle, are we able to?
It'll all happen at the same time.
Member Granlin.
So I know you said that if students still want to wear masks, that's fine and absolutely, we want to support them. If a student wants to wear a mask and they don't have one, are we still going to be able to provide one as a district?
We sure will, yes.
I assumed as much, but I also thought it would be important to ask, so thank you.
Yes.
I also have seen the free KN95 masks at local places. So if you, I think pharmacy is correct. People can also, if they want the KN95, they can look at local pharmacies and they are free of cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I also know, like, this happened at the middle school the other day. It was a child was wearing one and it broke. And so thinking about if the kid comes wearing one and it breaks, like, well, we have options and it sounds like we both, so that's great.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Brenna. No, it's okay. So we will have, we'll have protocol in place for, like, if numbers go up and like remasking? Like, that's something that's part of our planning?
Yes, thank you. So we do have a mask policy, a school board mask policy. And part of the communication has been and will continue to be, if we see surges, you know, that may be part of our new normal, right? I mean, and we just don't know, but we'll continue to monitor, monitor this pandemic. You know, we always like to say, well, we don't like to say. We begrudgingly say that COVID drives us, we don't drive COVID, right? So yes, as if, I think most people will look at a temporary mask relaxation, you know, of the, of the requirement and, but it won't be tossing them out the window. Like, we'll, we'll keep our masks on hand and, and continue to monitor as we go through. So it is a reality that, that I think we're all facing, that masks may come back. And for some, some of us, we might not do away with them altogether.
So, and that would follow, like, the CDC guidance of, like, this area is green and yellow and orange, like, on their mapping, is that kind of what we're going to be following? Or do you have a different?
Yep. So what we've learned is that that guidance changes all the time, right? So if, if an executive order were to ever come into play, we would follow that. If, you know, the Department of Health or the CDC, that's what we've been following and will continue to look to the medical professionals. We also consult with our local public health officials on a regular basis for guidance and input. Yeah.
Good questions. Thank you all for, Lauren.
I have just another question, related, unrelated, but related to COVID-19. Are we still communicating out to families exposures or cases? What's the reporting process at this point in time and will that stay the same?
So I'll turn that back to Director Bennett and/or Director Frye. I know our, our COVID dashboard is still on the website.
Yeah, we've had so few cases the last few weeks. I think last week, we had one student case, so that those people were communicated with. So we do have the, the template and smore and then they craft, they, meaning the principals, craft it depending on when the date was, who was in contact, what have you, and they send it out for students and I believe staff as well.
So we're still doing that, it's just that we haven't, the reason why I haven't gotten the emails that I was getting is because we don't have the cases.
They've dropped.
Correct.
Does it still depend on parent reporting?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, yeah, if there's a positive case. Talk to your health specialist so we can report that to MDH and then also talk about quarantine and talk about kind of supports you may need at home.
Great.
Thank you.
Looking around again. All right. Great, thank you so much. And thanks for all your hard work over the course of the last two years. I mean, we're two, we're a two-year mark almost, right? Was it March 13th, the world shut down? Wow, what an anniversary you'll never want to celebrate. Having said that, let's move on to action items. And we will start with, great segue, right?
Yeah.
We'll start with our health insurance renewal. Oh, that's appropriate. Wowzer, and we'd like to welcome Directors Bennett and Hennickins.
Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. Back on February 22nd, you presented information on, it's HITA, the Health Insurance Transparency and Accountability Act. And it's a state requirement that every two years, we go out for health insurance bids. And the last time was in March of 2020, so when everything started. We did receive responses from five carriers and we're currently with Blue Cross Blue Shield, through the South Central Service Cooperative. The cooperative, if we did stay with it, would be switching to Medica July 1st. And when we looked at the selection criteria, we looked at limited disruption for employees and families, same or comparable benefit levels, same or comparable network and drug formulary, quality customer service, rate competitiveness, multi-year rate guarantees, and the big one, the most good for the most people. So the recommendation for the school board is to approve Health Partners effective July 1st. So tonight, we're here seeking approval.
All right, so looking for a motion to approve health insurance bid from Health Partners effective July 1st, 2022.
No move.
Laura?
Second.
Lauren, discussion or questions?
I think just a comment that we had a really good discussion and lots of questions at the original presentation. So thank you to Director Bennett for that.
I did have a staff member approach me about this and their major concern was that they would be appropriately trained on the new ins and outs of the insurance carriers, since some things will be changing. Director Bennett, I'm assuming that's your neck of the woods?
Yes. So actually, Heather, who was here presenting last time, she's our benefits specialist and charity has stuff drafted to send out an email tomorrow if it's approved, just about the change. And we will work closely with Health Partners for training on any changes. And she has worked with many carriers throughout her career in benefits and she did say that Health Partners has one of the best customer service opportunities for people and they need to call. So I think it'll be a fairly smooth transition.
Great. So I'll email you with all their, no, I'll email yours, your coworker.
Heather Lynch.
Heather Lynch. All right. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the 2022-2023 school calendar and I'd like to keep welcoming Director Bennett.
Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. Again, back on February 22nd, I presented more detail the 2022-2023 school calendar. We did have a committee that worked on this, included parents, staff, and we had a student representative this school year. So for the next school year, we plan to have school start on September 6th, right after Labor Day. Last day for students will be June 8th and graduation will also be June 8th. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the 2022-2023 school calendar.
All right, so the motion is to approve the 2022-2023 school calendar as presented thoroughly in our last meeting.
No move.
Second.
All right, Mary and Lauren, discussion. All right. Also another conversation, we had quite a bit of discussion on last week and thanks for everyone's input on that as well. Other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We'll move on to the custodial contract and Director Bennett, you're back.
I'm back. Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. Again, previously, we discussed with the Board the negotiations with the custodial employees. Some of the contract changes include salary adjustments, revisions to holiday language, so getting rid of, since Christmas Day, we say December 25th. New specialist position, a longevity increase. A lot of the changes are similar to the other 284 contracts. This contract's been ratified by the custodial employees. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the 2021-2024 custodial contract.
All right. Our motion is to approve the master agreement between Independent School District 13 in Columbia Heights and the Columbia Heights Custodial Union, local 284 for 2021 to 2024.
No move.
Lauren?
Second.
Molly?
I mean, just massive thank you to everybody who worked hard on this contract and also shout out to the custodians for all of the work that they have done over the last two years, especially. It's pretty, we, we literally would not be here without them.
Somebody should figure the raw weight of hand sanitizer the custodians have hauled around the building. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Move on to the custodial clerk. And Director Bennett, you're on a roll. Custodial contract, excuse me, clerical, I can read. UVM taught me that, right? Clerical contract. Thank you, Director Bennett.
Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, we're here to present the clerical contract. We discussed this previously. A lot of the updates are similar to the other 284 contracts, so a salary increase, holiday language revising that, increased longevity. We did add in a bilingual differential for a clerical employee who says a Spanish speaker and uses that as part of their job to give a differential for the hours that they work. This contract's been ratified by the clerical employees. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the 2021-2024 clerical contract.
All right, as Lindsay just said, approval of the clerical contract for 2021-2024. Motion, that's the motion.
No move.
Lauren, second?
Second.
Laura? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Great. And we will finally let Director Bennett off the hook and we'll welcome up Director Stunkel to talk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yep, to talk about the mini adventures and adventure club fees.
Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here this evening to, as an action item, for asking the school board to approve the increase in the fees for adventure club and mini adventures for the 22-23 school year and summer following that. I presented that it's approximately 2% and, and last time I was here, I, I gave some examples of the increase.
All right, thank you. As Director Stunkel mentioned, we're looking for a motion to approve the mini adventures club and adventure club fees.
No move.
Lauren?
Second.
Molly? All right, discussion.
I just have a comment. I just appreciate Director Stunkel's attention to affordability as well as sustainability of the program. So thank you to your attention to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're the, is this the only self-funding lane of our district? Is there something comparable?
It's definitely self-funded. It's the main one. It's definitely the main one, yes.
Main one. So we appreciate your attentiveness to the budget and keeping our students' best interests at heart.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll welcome up Director, Executive Director Niemwey to talk to us about the achievement and integration budget.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the Board and Superintendent Stenvik. I am here seeking approval of the 2022-2023 Achievement and Integration Budget. Two weeks ago, I presented the budget summary and details, which showed that 80% of the funds is spent on directory and services and 20% of it is spent on professional development as well as administrative costs. And so I hope you can approve that budget tonight.
Right. Seeking approval for?
And it is in the amount of $1,094,541.
Good memory. Well done. So seeking approval for the achievement and integration budget.
No move.
Molly?
Second.
Mary? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will move on to board topics. Molly, you mentioned one earlier.
Yeah, basketball game tomorrow night at 7:00. There is the opportunity to go downstairs for the dinner beforehand. I think it starts at 6:15. They do, I believe now, have the number one seed through sections and possibly state.
They are the number one team in the state right now.
What's that?
I think they are the number one team in the state right now.
So I think it's going to be a long run and I'm fortunate, or I'm glad for them that we're going to be at home for all those games, so it's wonderful. And congratulations to them, because that's kind of a big deal.
That is a big deal, that's hard to do.
All right. I just wanted to say it's School Social Worker Week, Social Worker Week. So shout out to all of our wonderful school social workers. This week and really every week, they've always been a really important part of our schools and especially with everything that the students and families and staff have gone through with COVID. They're integral, necessary, it's super important. So, you know, we know that they've been asked to do a lot and grateful for everything that our social workers at our district do each and every day. So kudos to you, thank you all, and happy social work.
Round of applause?
Yes.
Yeah, there it is. Thank you for bringing that up. Brenna?
Yeah. So as we have passed our equity statement, I wanted to bring up an equity policy that I would love to see us look at as a board. Just with current events and some of the things that are happening to LGBT students across the country, I wanted us to look at our policies in, in how we protect our LGBT students here and how we create space specifically for that group for all to belong and all to succeed here in Heights. And so I guess, as I was looking through our policies, thank you, Xena, for sending me those. We have got kind of, on the negative side of, like, looking at discrimination, like, you can't harass and those kinds of things. But we don't necessarily have, like, positive inclusive policy that specifically addresses gender identity, whether we're talking about pronouns or, like, dead naming students, things. One of the things that's happening in other states right now is that schools are being asked to out students to their families before students are ready for that to happen. And then I think as well, like, the, the instruction and the policy that would go around that for our teachers and how they deal with students and their identities within classrooms, how we honor names and pronouns and, and how we, even like, in the registration paperwork, there's not spaces for people to go with the name that's not on their legal birth certificate. Like, there's a lot of different things that, that we don't do yet to protect that community. And so I would love it if we began to look at that as a board and how we can. And so I would love it if we began to look at that as a board and how we can create inclusive policy around this group and really come alongside them right now as, as they're under attack and how can we create space that's supportive? And I know with our policy on immigration and like how our spaces are safe from ICE, like that mattered when that began to happen. And, you know, ICE was showing up on school campuses, we were able to say we have policy in place that protects our space. We don't do that here. And I think that looking ahead and having inclusive policy that, that makes sure that we protect especially our trans students can help if, if things were to change in our state if we already had standing policy, so.
We can interact, right, during the board topics because it's a board meeting? Do people have, I, I would love to, on a, on like a bare minimum, like see what you sent Brenna. Are you able to include that in our board packet?
Sure, and I can state it here, it was Policy 416 and the form. So it was the harassment and violence policy with, with the specific language of, of how we identify the protective classes.
Okay.
And then additionally, one thing I would say is in that update, I could also provide, I know there are districts in the metro area that do have a specific equity policy. I think it's more inclusive to multiple groups that would need, you know, that would fall under protective class. But I could certainly send those as some examples.
That'd be great.
There are some, I have a website that I found as well that like is specifically for creating LGBT safe policy that would, there are districts that are doing that specifically to create protections with possible verbiage if that's something that I can send through Xena as well.
But could you send that to Xena to include in the packet as well?
Yeah.
Would this be something that would start at the Subcommittee on Policy and then move forward?
Yes. So in the past, when there's a creation of a new policy, oftentimes it's a, it's a larger process. So there's, whether there's a model policy, you know, and drafting, a drafting process, there's some inclusivity in terms of having multiple people at the table to, to look and provide input. But yes, it does come to the, to the Subcommittee on Policy. It doesn't always start there in my experience. Is that right, Don?
Sometimes it starts in administration, like our most recent would be our, like a from scratch was a pool. Like the pool safety policy. So sometimes that comes, the administration initiates and then it, yeah. Comes to the, that's the last one I can think of that.
Me too.
This rose from nothing, yeah.
For the Subcommittee on Policy, I know we utilize the policy services through MSBA. Is that something, have they presented any policies of this nature forward at this time?
Not, not that we're aware of, but we would certainly use them and then, you know, are, are there connections in terms of other examples? That would be out there. Those are things we could certainly find.
And I just, to be clear, I'm not saying that we can't do it because they don't have one, it was just as a.
They don't have a pool policy either.
Right, exactly.
Don't need to reinvent the wheel.
No.
Yeah, no. Don?
In, in past practice, MSBA jumps on at some point, but it's not till it's a conversation.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we'll start with just hearing the information and then we are meeting as a policy Subcommittee next time and we'll see if that maybe elevates to a discussion at a work session where we could have more time to collaborate on what that would mean. It's not a small thing to add a policy. So is this a matter of practice? Like how are we actually practicing this in our district? Or is this a matter of policy? It's always just my basic question when it comes to policy. Sometimes policies are really appropriate and really necessary and other times we really need to manage our practice and that's more of a management issue, so we can talk about that too. So what, what's in the best interest of our students?
I would, I would love to see us at least look at the policy side. I think as we look at trying to bring more diverse teachers and recruitment, having and even like being a safe space as people enroll, seeing this in writing as something that's a priority for us, I think is, is something that I would support anyway, whether or not that's what we choose to do. I think that it would have benefits.
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate Brenna bringing this up because I think as a board, we need to start, we need to do more of this because we put our equity statement and we all talked about that that statement is just not words on paper, right? It's a call to action. And if we're going to expect action to take place, then we also have to take action and do what we can do. And kind of as we talked about through some of our brainstorming, we have the ability and the power, power's a bad word, but we have the ability to, to make a difference and to do something and to continue to move us forward. And, and we are governance and policy, so looking at policy makes sense.
Thank you so much for bringing that forward. Appreciate it. And this is, I think we, I agree, we need to continue having like conversations like this because if we're trying to make that equity lens, how, how are these applying? And then, you know, in addition to policy, for me, it's also like, are we, again, I would think you said it more eloquently than me. Are we practicing what we mean? And for me, how does our pol, current policy cover these things too? Like I want to be sure that, you know, we're not making redundant policy is my only, one of my considerations, so.
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank you Brenna for bringing this up because I, I do think that this is a preemptive action that maybe we can, we can do the right thing beforehand to make sure that there isn't, there isn't harm done. You know, and I, I really do appreciate that. The real question does come is, is this policy, is this, is this practice, is this, what, what, what is it? And what is it supposed to look like? But I think it's up to us to figure that out and to, to do the right thing.
Yeah, and if other people have information they want to share with Xena, then she can get it all out to us within the rules in a meeting and different things like that, so, awesome. Thank you. Other board topics? Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, other, other.
See, look, even with the mask on, you knew exactly.
Well, your, your whole body reacted to it.
I don't have to tell you.
Shocking.
I don't have my therapist's face on.
All right. Well, thank you for a good meeting, everyone. It is 8:07 and I will adjourn this meeting.